Okay, you do.
Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first item is to accept the agenda which is in order and ready for your approval.
There's a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Your next item is to receive the General Manager's report. We have a very short General Manager's report today, but very important to us. Our item is to recognize our superstar of the quarter. Please help me congratulate Christina Menses, Administrative Specialist from the Safety and Security Department. Christina, come on down.
And obviously, she didn't know it was coming.
Come on down, come on down. Christina is responsible for handling badging for all RTC employees, contractors and staff. She's thorough and takes the lead on public records requests and responding to sensitive customer complaints that deal with safety and security concerns. Christina has gone above and beyond with learning the risk management and legal process, and has been diligent in working with internal departments to collect insurance claims for property damages. We'd like to thank you, Christina, for your hard work and dedication to the agency.
What's this?
Just one.
Surprise!
Surprise! Surprise! This is for you? Congratulations.
We get center stage.
I'll do the photos first and then go.
First of all, I want to say thank you for this honor. I was not expecting this today. I'm actually on vacation today, and I was surprised, this is really a surprise. My team always are full of surprises. I love them to death. They're just wonderful people to work with. I can honestly say I enjoy working here, and I'm so happy and I feel so honored. Thank you so much for the award.
Your next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from our Director, Rudy Malcomon.
Thank you, Tina. Before we bring up the presentation on NDOT funding in Southern Nevada, I wanted to mention a few things that are happening federally with the actions in Congress before they went on recess. So, the existing transportation bill authorization expired at the end of July, and just before the expiration, the House passed an extension, the Senate passed it as well. So, we have a three-month extension to the end of October. They identified enough funding to go to the end of December if they need to. So, we are pleased that at least we don't have a federal shutdown of the transportation program federally. And then, on the Senate side, we were pleased with their action of passing a six-year bill called the DRIVE Act. And I've mentioned that before. It is a slight increase in funding, and they add a new national freight program to that. They changed the Tiger Grant program to more of a program that Congress can control for those types of grant projects instead of the administration. But we are pleased that it's a long-term bill, sustained funding. Thank you. We'll watch and see. I know that there's disagreements between the revenue that's going to pay for the transportation bill in the long term. Senate and House will get together when they get back from recess and iron out their differences, and we hope that at least it's a six-year bill and that they identify the funding. But the funding is still a challenge. They're still talking about corporate tax reform is one way of funding it. Gas tax is an alternative, but it doesn't have a lot of legs politically. So, we'll have to just watch and wait and hope that they pass a long-term bill by the end of October or at the latest, the end of December. And I also mentioned that Senator Heller was successful in getting the I-11 Amendment in there, working with his counterparts in Arizona. So, it's extended from Arizona border with Mexico all the way up to I-80 as a designation for I-11. The other thing that I wanted to mention is on Project NEON, we're taking in proposals on August 21st. City Las Vegas has representation on the Review Committee, and the timeframe would be October, we'll take to the Board a recommended design build team. There's three teams shortlisted. And then, in November, the Board will actually approve the contract. So, we anticipate a notice to proceed shortly thereafter. But the notice to proceed first is for the design efforts to get a construction package approved, and then you'll probably see the construction start in the second quarter of next year. But we're really excited. It's a significant-sized project, a lot of changes coming on I-15 in that section by Charleston up to Spaghetti Bowl. And I wanted to also mention the confidentiality of the price. Price is 60% of the score, and then the technical proposal is 40% of the score. That gets combined to select the preferred design build team. But the price is not opened up, it's not accessible until we get the technical scores in. That way, the design build teams are confident that you can't play games with the technical score to try to cheat the system there. I'm going to go ahead and go into the presentation. So, the request was made last month. You looked at the annual work program of NDOT, which is basically a lot of the state-funded maintenance contracts. The federally funded contracts come through the RTC as a normal process in the planning efforts that we jointly do together. Sorry, you can't see the totals on this one. For some reason, the PowerPoint messed up from when I saved it. But you can see that the numbers were significant in 800 million is the number you see in the total. Now, we don't have $800 million a year between federal, state, and local typically. So, what this means is that you program a project when you book it, basically. You're committing the funds to it, and there's only about 320 million federal funds available. So, you can see that federal funds were in excess of that 320 million that Nevada receives. That's because you're committing future federal funds to some of these projects, so that's why it's over nearly 800 million. But you can see that Clark County, under those numbers, receives about 69% of the revenue. Now, I was questioning, well, why, usually it's about half of the total revenue to Clark County projects. We have to report federal, state, and local-funded projects to the legislature that come through NDOT. All other counties, with the exception of statewide projects and Washoe County. So, you can see that the numbers there, the distribution favors Clark County. But I wanted to make a correction because I recognize that we're booking some of the larger projects of the RTC and other local, the city, pardon me, Clark County Public Works had in the work program for 2015. So, I took out the Airport Connector and the I-11 Phase II, which had, the RTC and I-11 Phase II had basically booked future federal revenue against that project. And I took out the local funds that Clark County Public Works had put towards the Airport Connector, left in the money that the state had given to Clark County for that project. And that gets back into what you would normally expect, about half of the funding. And I questioned, well, why is it less than half? Because mainly because of that USA Parkway project up in northern Nevada, which was a critical project for economic development. We call it, we know the story with the events last fall with Tesla announcing, and this is going to be basically a time savings between I-80 and connection to US-50 in northern Nevada. So, that explains those numbers. But I wanted to also mention some of the projects that we've done in fiscal year 15 that we booked, programmed. Phase I was the NDOT portion of I-11. Phase II was the RTC's, and we had some contribution to that. Airport Connector, I had a partial amount for the funds that NDOT was putting towards the Clark County Public Works project that's just kicking off. We just had the successful groundbreaking event for Phase II-A of the interchange up there. I'm sorry, it's Phase III-A typo. The interchange at the Beltway in the northwest part of the valley with US-95. Blue Diamond. And I also wanted to mention on 95, that is one of the fuel revenue indexing FRI projects with a significant amount from the RTC. We appreciate that effort, and also flood control district funds on that project. The widening of Blue Diamond Road up to just a bit east of Mountain Springs Summit. Widen it to four lanes. We've had some safety challenges on that road, so we're starting out on the widening, the first phase of that widening. We have a second phase planned in a couple of years when this first phase is done. US-95 overlay project kind of north of the Las Vegas area. The Flamingo BRT, our contribution was booked to give RTC towards that Bus Rapid Transit project. East Lake Need Boulevard was another project in North Las Vegas. Star Interchange had some amount of funds from NDOT in that. And we also had a road transfer that was significant amount of money to North Las Vegas for transferring the section of North Las Vegas Boulevard. So, looking forward to '16, some of the major projects, I-15 North widening from Craig to Speedway is planned for '16. Durango to Kyle Canyon, widening US-95. And I know that people are kind of tired of the cone zone on that stretch of 95, but we are kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel of the 95 widening projects. Project NEON, I mentioned, it's going to be bonded. We bonded it so that we wouldn't do it at the expense of the rest of our program down here in Clark County and the rest of the state. And we have a major rehabilitation project planned for the viaduct. We want to look at what we can do without, it's going to really affect traffic, so we're trying to see what our alternatives are to avoid messing up the viaduct when some of the same work is going to mess up I-15 on NEON. So, it is going to be another project that I want to mention, Apex, I-15, US-93 interchange. That one is subject to a Tiger Grant, but I think that we're trying to find ways to do some improvements at that interchange where a lot of the sanitation trucks exit right there to get to the landfill. You've got a lot of commuters going to the Apex Industrial Center. So, chances are, we're going to commit to doing some improvements there that will improve the interchange flow of traffic. So, and I put a little disclaimer, subject to available funds. I believe that Congress is going to step up, pass a six-year bill, or at least a long-range bill that's adequately funded for the state to continue with about the same amount of federal revenue that we currently receive. And hopefully, we'll receive that Tiger Grant, but I think that if we don't, we still have a need out there that we're going to address and work with North Las Vegas on, and RTC. So, that concludes my Director's Report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Comments or questions? Commissioner?
Thank you. Are there going to be any new dollars or revenue or grants that we think we could identify to look at light rail again within the county? And I'm thinking, do we, are you or is RTC represented on the Governor's Committee that's looking at the global business district? Because that's going to be transit-driven as well as looking at the taxation base. Are you guys on?
We, Commissioner, we are not on the authority that was created for the Express West project. We are on the commission for the Maglev project, but we definitely will be providing information and attending those meetings so that we have a presence with the authority.
You're talking about two different things. So, what she's asking about is the Southern Nevada Tourism Infrastructure Committee.
Oh, the other one, we are not, again, we are not, we don't have a member on that committee, but we will attend the meetings and have a presence and provide information, because I know it's something that really ties well with what Tina's been doing with Rossi Ron Carter on the TBIP.
So, the RTC is not a voting member of the Southern Nevada Tourism Infrastructure Committee. We are on the technical committee, and so we will be providing a review, a very comprehensive review to the committee at their December meeting, wherein we'll talk about all the things that we have been talking about. We'll talk about light rail, mass transit. We'll talk about the infrastructure needs, not just in the corridor, but also for Southern Nevada.
Yeah, I was, I had family that were in Atlanta, and I didn't realize they'd created theirs to go directly into their convention center, and then it spurred out of there. And it's kind of an interesting, if there's going to be some remixing, because with Riviera so far away, they have to be sensitive to how people are going to move just back and forth in that corridor. And again, it makes some sense to do, even if it's not light rail, different types of modes of transit, from cable cars that don't require electric to whatever. So, we're moving people in a different way. And then, you mentioned the Maglev, so that's still out there. Because with that El Cajon fire, I think that should be telling people that there's, we've got to look at other ways, because that impacted tourism, both California and Nevada side, as far as that's concerned. Plus, luckily, the fire departments did a phenomenal job, but it's still a huge issue. So, what's the status of that, if anything? Just, they meet every once in a while.
The status of the group that worked, of the, well, I think what they're doing is they're trying to look at alternatives of private funding, private investors that are interested in looking at that project and funding it. They're definitely behind the, the status of their project is behind the Express West project, because Express West had their environmental document approved.
Correct. So, it's not necessarily a Maglev anymore, because I think steel wheel is really what you need to use in order to interconnect if you want the interconnection of our areas. Maglev is fine, but it would be too isolated, and we'd lose the opportunity, make us the east coast of the west coast, I guess.
And NDOT is willing to work with any rail project proponent, because it's who gets funded first that we're going to, when it's a real project, we'll work with them to, because our right-of-way is one of the alternatives for where it could be accommodated in I-15 corridor.
Okay, and UNLV, the President just mentioned to me yesterday that they've gone to Germany where they're manufacturing different modes of transit in their university system. And they're going to begin selling that, yeah, to different countries and such. And so, it might just be something to talk to Mr. President Jessup about. There might be some different things out there that we may not know with regards. And then, how much was actually allocated for the Tesla Road, whatever, what's it called?
Yeah, US, USA Parkway. So, about 42 million was allocated to right-of-way and improvements for the existing highway that NDOT purchased from the developer of TRIC, the industrial center. And then, 70 million is what our budget is for the design-build project to construct the extension. That project should have proposals in around the same time, by the end of the year, similar to NEON.
Is that bonded, or is that coming out of your?
That is actually state funds.
State dollars, so out of the state highway fund?
Yes.
That's majority funded by us. Okay. Yeah, I think there's, down the road, some of the legislators need to get a clue. And I appreciate that you subtracted that back out, because that better represents what was going on as far as the financing, but there should be some payback, I think, in my opinion, towards the local governments. And maybe that's something, once the ballot question passes, that that money is reallocated first back to Southern Nevada projects before you use the state dollars for some new projects. And that might be a way to kind of offset some of that cost, just a little thing in the back of your mind. And then, the Spaghetti Bowl, did I see something in the news just in the last couple of days that there was something that happened that might be creating?
There's a new moniker, the Centennial Bowl, is that?
I don't know, I just, that there was something that federal, some dollars were at risk, and they may not do something, be able to build something, or, I have to admit, I don't watch TV, and I just caught it up, I had it down for the dog. And I caught it as I was walking in the house, and I didn't get to, okay, I'll go back and track down what I was listening to. Thank you very much.
Mayor Goodman?
Mr. Chairman. Two things quickly, I'm sure you've been asked, I do sit on the Governor's Tourism Committee as President Jessup, and one of the very most important pieces was transportation. Everybody was asking for a presentation, I would imagine you're doing that.
In December, yeah, at your December meeting.
And including NDOT's information. And I know we were being briefed, and I just was speaking with Mayor Woodbury, Mayor Goodman, about the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, about new criteria through the EPA on ozone and federal funds going.
Risk, if we are not, and that's what you may have heard, and they may go at risk, our federal dollars, if we are not in compliance. And why they talked about to us that we have done a wonderful job. One of the biggest issues is we get, I forgot to do this again, I'm so sorry. Well, I've got such a loud voice anyway, and they all tell me, just open the window, you don't need a microphone. The dollars, I mean, so critical for us, but the problems on the ozone come in from California, and there is no way unless we build a wall, thank you, Donald Trump, all the way up 20 miles to prevent the flow of air coming in from the west coast and from, we've got now the fire, fire pollution, as well as everything coming in from California. But as you go forward, just to know that before you come through this Tourism Committee, and I think it's critical, and I would echo what you said, how does that information, how do dollars get taken out of the fund by the legislature that is pre-planned and to take that amount, 42 million dollars?
Or 70 million?
Or 70 mil, how much has gone to that roadway up, what do you call it, the Parkway? That was an absolute, just a vote of the legislature in a special meeting, correct?
Yes, it was in a special session last fall.
And you did not present there anything?
We had to present what the basis for that, the right-of-way and improvement costs, what the benefits of the project were. But primarily, the driver was Tesla and economic development in general for that area.
And do we follow up, anybody follows up, as to the value of the dollar being spent that way and taken out of these other funds that are so critical, it serves a greater number of people?
Definitely. The department had to do a benefit-cost analysis on the project, and it was about, I think it was substantial, 13 to 1, I think, for the, basically because of the time savings between I-80 and US-50 for freight movement, primarily so if somebody was on I-80, they can cut through USA Parkway and have time savings if they're hauling freight to Southern Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. You mentioned the smoke, and that was the issue, was the air quality that I was caught. We still, in the state of Nevada, don't require smogging of vehicles, except in Clark County and northern, in Washoe County, and then they exempt Tahoe and Mount Charleston. I think that's still, the air doesn't stop at the county. I used to have this argument with my colleagues when I served up there. But it's another additional component, that if we're going to look at some new EPA rules, we have to look at what's, where everybody's coming from as well. And so, that just might be something to take a look at. It's not been looked at since the 90s, that I'm aware of.
Tina, would you just clarify the TIBP versus the?
SNTIC. Yeah, sure. I know, we have a lot of acronyms, and they're also very similar. So, the Governor recently created the Southern Nevada Tourism Infrastructure Committee, which is made up of the Mayor of Las Vegas, the Chairman of the County Commission, UNLV President Len Jessup, the President of the Chamber Krista McMillan, and then also six of the resort properties. And the purpose of the committee is to take a look at the needs, wants of Southern Nevada as it relates to event centers, arenas, convention centers, what do we need to be doing? And then, also, how are we going to make sure that we're connecting through transportation those major destinations? The committee will meet for a year on a monthly basis. The committee will receive reports from the airport, the RTC, who else am I missing? The?
Imagine visitors.
Yes, the LVCBA. We'll present to them the data. They will in turn ask us to do some more research, come back, explore, make recommendations. In the end, they are to come up, by July of next year, they're to come up with recommendations to the Governor on legislation that may need to be explored, funding issues that may need to be explored. Basically, it's a, I very much appreciate the fact that it's a forced conversation between all of us in Southern Nevada as to what are we going to be in the next 20 years, and how are we going to work together to make sure that these things are prioritized appropriately, so we're not competing against each other, and that we've got solid foundation, a plan for moving the financing forward. So, that's the, so, yeah, you're right, that's the Southern Nevada Tourism Infrastructure Committee. Now, the RTC, along with the LVCBA and the resorts and the taxi cabs and shuttle bus organizers and the Chamber, have been meeting for a couple of years to develop a plan that is specific to transit and transportation in the core area, even more specifically to take a look at how we're connecting the airport to the resorts, to the convention centers, and to downtown. We've been working, like I said, for a couple of years on this plan. We've got a draft that I think you've probably heard about, it got leaked to the media. And we will have our final product in October of this year, wherein we will talk about the, a vast array of infrastructure improvements that need to be made, whether it's for pedestrians or vehicles or transit, and also how each one of those components can be financed. And then, we'll be turning to you for recommendations on priorities to move forward with.
And it's anticipated that the RTC staff will make presentations to this board, LVCBA, any of the member agency boards that would like that prior to, just prior to the release of the official final report.
To the official, yeah, exactly.
Good. Commissioner?
As you look at that report, there's also what I would call low-hanging fruit, things that do not cost a lot of money, it's more policy changes, such as the one ways on Paradise and Swenson and so forth. Since that's mostly my district, I'd be welcome, if there's, in whatever you do in your analysis, to bring to us some policy recommendations that we could entertain, either as RTC board or as the County Commission, I don't know quite exactly how all that works, that we could begin some implementation for that connectivity. And that might just be something that you identify as you look at pricing. There are some things that are more easily done, and that way, we can begin the public outreach, because it has, I got the old Kimley Horn study, read through it, Public Works gave it to me, but it would be, we need to make sure those businesses are involved and understand what had been looked at and recommended in the past, so.
I love it. I think that's the intent of the plan itself, is that after we've come to come to a consensus agreement on what needs to be done, then we start to pick those projects that are priorities and that we can get done. And we'll be looking for leadership to help implement that.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Rudy, thank you for this presentation. This kind of speaks to that age-old issue as far as the equity, north and south. This is great, I am in conjunction with your state tip program, the thirty-day comment that's going on now. I'm sure our folks will take a look at this as far as equity and making sure that these numbers and in the appropriate budget years, that we are always able to answer the equity question, not only to NDOT, but certainly to our constituents. So that's greatly appreciated.
I will get the actual backup data to RTC staff as well as the PowerPoint presentation because it kind of didn't print properly when we printed it in color, so we'll get that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation, Rudy?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your next item is to conduct your first citizen's participation period.
Prior to that, could I just add to the GM's report, that the Business Press Green Award winners, that the Regional Transportation Commission won in the public agency category, and the Southern Nevada Strong won in the innovation category. So once again, to all those involved in that, at the RTC and SNWS. Doing the right things for the right reasons, always good to notice that.
And having fun doing it.
This is the first time set aside for public comment, those wishing to speak to the commission on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. I do not have any cards, so seeing and hearing no one will close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, your next item is item number five, which is to elect a chair and vice chair.
I would like to make a motion to have Chairman Brown continue as our chair, I think he's brought thoughtful leadership to this board and has really elevated us to be one of the premier regional bodies in the state of Nevada, so that's my motion.
Are there any other nominations from the floor? Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes. That motion passes. Thank you, Councilwoman, thank you board for the support. And as far as our vice chair, I would make a motion to retain Councilwoman March as the vice chair of the RTC in the form of a motion. Any other comments or questions? Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next part of the agenda is your consent agenda, which is made up of items six through forty-six, and may be taken in one motion.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, your next item is item number forty-seven, which will be introduced by Mike Hand.
Thanks, Tina. The RTC's Unified Planning Work Programs for fiscal years 2014, and I guess I should say, this is the 2014 Origin-Destination Onboard Transit Travel Survey item. As I started, the RTC's UPWP for fiscal years 2014 and 2015 included an origin and destination onboard transit survey to collect detailed information about the socioeconomic characteristics and travel behavior of transit riders, both Las Vegas and area residents and visitors. The collected information will then be used to develop and calibrate the RTC's regional travel demand forecasting model that is used to predict future travel demands based on projected household and employment growth and assumed regional transportation system changes. The study has been completed and Chris Tatham with ETC Institute is here to give a brief presentation on the main findings of the study. Chris?
Great, it's a pleasure to be here, I'm Chris Tatham. For those of you from the city of Las Vegas and Henderson, our firm also does your community attitude surveys, so it's good to see you again. One division of our firm specializes in doing transit-related research, so we had the pleasure of working with you the last year. And today I'm just going to give you some of the highlights of what's really hundreds of thousands of pieces of data, so I'm going to try to do it fairly quickly in the short amount of time that we have. As far as the survey's purpose, it's mainly to help you update your regional travel demand model, so you can really understand where people are going, where they're coming from when they use transit, get some characteristics of who they are, what they look like, their demographic and economic profiles. In many ways, perhaps most important to you, is it's important for getting new starts funding from the FTA. They like to see that you have good data about your ridership before they award additional funds. So that's the main reason we did it. The goal was to get a representative sample of riders from the region. We were shooting for getting thirty thousand folks to understand where they board and alight the system, and another twelve thousand folks to actually complete a detailed intercept interview. And I'll give you some more statistics on that in just a little bit. As far as the overall project schedule, we started in January of 2014, we did a pilot test last fall, or last spring, and started our on-to-off survey. Essentially, that's where people got on, buses, we asked them essentially where they got on or gave them cards to capture that, and then we figured out where they got off, so we really knew the flows through the transit system. We then last fall did a more detailed full intercept survey to really capture everything about their trip, where they started their trip, where they got on, where they transferred, where they got off, plus a lot of economic and socio-demographic characteristics about individuals. As far as the overall number of surveys that were obtained, we ended up getting over forty thousand on-to-off surveys, so putting that in perspective, you have about a hundred and ninety thousand riders on a typical weekday, so we captured about more than one in five of them. We also got over fourteen thousand people to participate in a full-blown intercept survey, which took most people about five to seven minutes to do. So what was unique about this process, it's the first time we've done a completely di-tablet PC, as our firms developed a lot of technology. It used to be you'd pass surveys out to people, but what would happen, a lot of people weren't, couldn't read, couldn't understand them, didn't fill them out, and so a lot of transit surveys historically were sort of biased to choice riders. So you probably have one of the best representative samples that you've ever had using the more advanced technology that was applied this time around. As far as some of the findings, we asked people where they're coming from and going to, and most folks were coming from home and going back to home, that's not a real surprise. But what was of interest probably to you is about a quarter of the trips actually involve people coming to or going to work-related places. So you have a very high percentage of folks who are using transit to get to work and get back to work or do work-related things during the day. Some of the other things that we found out is what they're, as far as the characteristics of the trip, we asked them how long it took them or how long they waited to access transit. We also asked them how long they waited to egress or get to their destination once they got off transit. The scale on this chart isn't the best because it is a little deceiving, it looks like people actually, the bars are bigger on the right side than the left side, but in reality, for most types of trips, people are willing to go a little further to access it, but on their destination, they want to be closer to where they're actually going. So it's important when you design transit that if people can't get to their destination once they get off transit, they may not use it. The one exception are bikers, you'll notice they'll actually ride longer once they get off to get to their destination than most other groups. In addition, we asked people as far as whether or not they transferred in their main mode of access, and most folks walk, and so it's going to be really important in the future, then unless the system changes dramatically, that you continue to provide access and egress that's fairly close to where people's origin destinations are going to be. And the way you have a transit center right now shows that most people are willing to tolerate the transit as part of their trip, and so there really isn't major, any major concerns that we saw as that perspective. What we did, though, is find out from travel group size, most transit riders travel by themselves, a lot of times it's when people go to work, they ride in their car by themselves. But you'll notice that most of your visitors are those who are intercepted on your downtown routes, that's basically the Deuce and the SDX. Seventy-one percent of them are actually in groups of two or more. So you've got a lot of visitors traveling with other people on the SDX and the Deuce. In addition, when we asked people how they paid, you'll see a lot of folks are using your twenty-four-hour pass, in fact, forty-five percent basically are picking the twenty-four-hour pass, some are using the thirty-day pass, and a few are using your fifteen-day pass. Only about nine percent were actually paying just for a single ride ticket. So when people are choosing to ride, it tends to be for all day, or they're looking for multiple days when they use your system. In addition, one of the things that we asked folks is whether or not they were visitors to the area, and you can see on the Deuce and the SDX or your downtown strip routes, eighty percent of the users are visitors. Really important, I'm going to show you some numbers in just a little bit that I think will really, perhaps if you don't already recognize it, just how significant transit is to the strip area and to this community as far as its overall visitor operations and the attractiveness of this region for visitors. As far as folks who were not visitors, we found that fifty-five percent of the folks who aren't visitors didn't have a valid driver's license. You'll see that most, many of them don't have a vehicle, only thirty-two point six had at least one vehicle. Without transit, you've got a lot of folks who wouldn't be able to get anywhere. And you might say, well, no big deal if they don't work. Well, we found out in this data that about eighty-six percent of them are in the employment base, seventy-three percent of folks are actually employed. And there's some of the statistics you'll see right now, of your folks who are not visitors, seventy-three point five, that third board down there, are employed, another thirteen percent are seeking work. So almost nine out of ten of your transit riders are either currently employed or part of the employment in this region. So without transit, a lot of your major employers would not be able to get the labor that they need because these people don't have cars and have other ways to get around. So very, very important to the region's economy.
Excuse me, just for a sec, Mayor Goodman, please.
Because you're on the subject, did you ask how many are using transit by need and how many by choice?
Yeah, we actually, the previous chart I showed you, I kind of glossed over it for a little bit by time, but you'll actually see one of the things as we asked them whether or not they could make the trip, you'll see, could the respondents use one of the vehicles they had, only twenty-three percent said yes. So even among those who have vehicles, a lot of them wouldn't be able to make the trip if they had not had transit be available to them. In addition, we got some basic information about the gender and the age, most of the folks who are using your system are at least two out of three are between eighteen and forty-four. We have almost a half and half, a little bit more males than females, but that's not that unusual with transit usage. In addition, we have good data by the ethnic and racial background of the different users. What I find interesting is that for the most part, it's almost the same by type of service. In other words, you don't see, outside you'll see Hispanics are a little bit lower when it comes to your express routes, whites are a little bit higher, but otherwise, for all types of service you have, you have a fairly uniform racial usage, which I think is great. In addition, we pulled out some of the data for visitors from other communities, and this is the part I wanted to emphasize to you today. You can see some of the other places that we've done surveys over the last couple of years, Charleston, Honolulu both have a lot of visitors. Twenty-two percent of the boardings in this system are generated by visitors. You know, put that in perspective, a hundred and ninety thousand boardings a day, you're talking about forty thousand folks are getting into your system, most of which are down on the Deuce and the SDX. And so imagine having forty thousand vehicle trips instead of forty thousand rides on your system. Without that, just imagine what that area would do. So I think it's really, this data just really shows how valuable transit is to this region, how important it is particularly to your downtown and strip, the ability for people to get around, and also for the economy as a whole. Just so, if anyone's curious, we did do the survey in both English and Spanish, there were a few other languages that were captured, and you can see about a quarter of the folks who were surveyed indicated they spoke a language other than English at home, most of which was Spanish. In addition, we asked folks, you know, kind of to summarize some of the highlights that we found, and these are some, actually, didn't pop up there, so I guess I'll tell you what it should have said. So bottom line takeaways from this is you have one of the best databases in the country. Our firm actually, the reason we've now done about twenty of these intercept tablet-based surveys is because frankly, it sets the standard for the quality of data that's gathered. What we did for you is really, at this point in time, the best product that we've done. I think you can be very comfortable, you have a great way to really understand what's going on among your transit users. But my personal takeaway is, if I have to summarize all the things we found, was just how critical transit is to the employment in this region, and then secondly, just how impactful this service you're providing with the Deuce and SDX is, particularly getting visitors around, because without that, you'd have forty thousand other trips being made some other way, which would most likely be taxis and cars in a very limited space. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions, but I appreciate you having me here today.
Stay right there, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was very helpful, and I think it's important to know that the visitor population's important part of our revenues and resources for the RTC, also serving our local population, getting them to and from work. In your survey work, did it also tell you where our greatest needs may be, where we need to maybe be looking at growing the RTC's service delivery? Because obviously, we are a transit provider for our community, and there are areas in our community that have needs, and maybe through surveying, you found out that there were specific needs for expansion into other parts of our?
Not, most of what our work is, is to give you the data, then all the modelers, they get to do that next work. So as you grow, based on the demographic characteristics, you know, and the type of land use that's projected, you could use this data to help project what future needs might be, so that's a little beyond what we're able to do.
So that data will then be delivered to the RTC that they can use it to do some modeling?
Exactly, so this data actually goes in and feeds your model to help you do those projections in the future.
Because our primary role, obviously, is to be the transit provider and transportation solutions provider for our community, and I know that there are needs in all of our communities to grow the system, and I think the people will use it as we make it more available to them, so that's something I'd like to see us look at going into the future.
Great report.
Is that report final? Has it been published, or? I'm sorry? Posted on the website. Okay, so that would make the assumption that all of the board members can get onto that website and check everything out? I'd like a hard copy, please. I'd like to touch it and feel it and mark it up, and yeah, so. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next item is item number forty-eight, and will be handled by Chairman Williams.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Agenda item forty-eight is to receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing pursuant to Nevada revised statute two eighty-eight, one fifty-three, and approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada and the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, Local one one oh seven, effective July one, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I would like to now provide you with a brief overview regarding the highlights on a new agreement that focuses on the following key areas. Article one, related to the agreement, changed the effective date of the agreement to July one, two thousand fifteen. Article eight, related to union rights, changed union bank hours pursuant to SB two forty-one. SB two forty-one created a new section in NRS two eighty-eight that deals with leave for time spent by an employee conducting union-related duties. Such leave can be granted only if the full cost of such leave is paid or reimbursed by the union or offset by the value of concessions. As a result, the terms of the agreement is as follows as it retains the union bank hours. Union bank hours were reduced from two hundred hours to a hundred and eighty-six hours. It also added a reimbursement provision in which SEIU will reimburse the RTC by June thirtieth of each year for hours used in excess of the hundred and eighty-six bank hours. Article fifteen, related to compensation, provides for a two-point-eight COLA increase for year one, and that includes a retro to July one, two thousand fifteen. Years two through five provides for a COLA increase based on a rolling previous three-year average of the CPI-UW, which is the Consumer Price Index for the Western United States, with a minimum of two percent and a maximum of three percent. Effective date of the COLA will be delayed one full pay period each year as a concession for union bank hours pursuant to SB two forty-one. Article twenty-one, related to merit adjustments, provides for a two-point-nine merit increase that also will be a retro to July one, two thousand fifteen. Article fifty, article forty-three, related to the term of the agreement, this is a five-year term, effective July one, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, with a re-opener at the year end three for economics only. With the exception of the articles I just highlighted above, all other articles in the contract remained unchanged. The estimated annual physical impact of the contract, including salaries and benefits, for year one will be one million, seven thousand. for year one will be one million seven thousand, approximately one million seven thousand, and for years two through five, it's an estimated range of one million three hundred thousand to one million six hundred thousand, and this range is based on a minimum of two percent and a maximum of three percent range. Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, we can open up for a public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Those wishing to speak to the board, please step forward. Good morning.
I'm Randy Botsett, Vice President and Business Agent at Teamsters Local 631. Just wanted to give you all a quick update. Teamsters had ratified a contract with MB Transportation on August 1st, so we do have a tentative agreement with them, and that's pretty much it. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
How you guys doing? Barry Johnston, Las Vegas Road Construction Watch. We've been kind of going through a bunch of the different road construction that's been going on, and we're kind of concerned with some accountability factors, especially with the...
Barry, if I could interrupt you, and respectfully, this public hearing is on the contract?
Oh, item number forty-three.
But if you just wait three or four minutes, we'll have that public... Don't walk all the way back up there. Hang down front. Hang down front with us. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the public hearing regarding the contract? Okay?
Just one question.
Don't rush.
Good morning, Caroline A.T. And it's really directed to Randy. MB contract has been signed with the Teamsters?
No, this is again...
I'm just asking, wanted to ask which, he said MB.
Yeah, but likewise, that is better addressed after this, but don't go anywhere. Stay down front with us, please. We'll have a wonderful public comment period in just a minute. Thank you. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of the public comment. Comments or questions from the board?
I appreciate that we're in compliance with SB 241 and that our employees will be making a living wage. I think that's very, very important, and I want to thank you, Tamara, for the list you gave me of those that still don't make fifteen dollars an hour. I do want to work on that with everybody, so I would make a motion, Mr. Chair, if there's not any other questions from the board.
Motion approved. I'd just like a quick comment. First of all, Tamara, her first public presentation, I thought she did a wonderful job.
Oh, no pressure. Aw, man. Pressure, man.
Next time, we'll have you up at the podium, so the camera will get the full shot there. And to compliment staff and the management team at the RTC, and likewise, if they are here, would those that were negotiating with SEIU on this contract, just stand, we won't call you out by name, but just stand, and greatly appreciate, this was a great process. A lot of, a lot of good things came out of this contract in a time where there was a lot of collective bargaining ambiguity out there, and this really, I think, will set the standard for some other things to follow. So I greatly appreciate both the management and the labor and what you've done over the last five sessions.
Chair, if I could recognize the RTC's negotiation team, they helped greatly through this process, and without them, we couldn't have got to an agreement.
I guess since we asked everybody else to stand up, would the management team stand up from the RTC?
Decretia Harris.
If they want, if they want to be seen, stand up, please. No, likewise, likewise. Thank you.
And Dr. Fred is not here.
That's appropriate. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, that brings us to our last item, item number forty-nine, which is your final citizens' participation period.
This is the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Barry, please.
So you have to excuse my public speaking. I'm the one that got stuck to come and talk to you guys today, so excuse my nervousness. One of the major things that we're looking for is just accountability between the road construction people and the contractors that are actually out there and the project managers. We've done public information requests and talking to the mayor's office, and they said that there is no system put in place or there's no system that we actually can look at to see what contractors have been reprimanded. I guess it's just like a lunch or a meeting that they have, and they just talk about the challenges and try to work through them, and we want to ask that, these issues that they're having and the challenges are recorded. So as Chris G. said, they were going to start making sure that people are accountable and that these contractors are accountable. If they're making them accountable, where's the system to record all of these things to make sure that they're accountable? And how do we access that? To make sure that you guys are doing, you know, keeping up on these contractors and whatnot. This Oregon tax-by-the-mile thing is a huge concern. People are brazing to us right now, and the PR campaign that the RTC is doing, there's some challenges in that. As you guys know, we've sent you emails about that. We're going to get into that a little bit later, once we get a little bit more information. There's still some challenges getting information out of everybody's office, which a few of you have been really great at helping. Some of you take our questions or responded as they are, as were our comments, our feelings, but they're really questions we're asking because we're trying to help you guys figure out why this is happening and the project management's so bad. The project managers, if we have, if they're not, why aren't they scheduling everybody twelve-plus hours a day? You're allowed to by county code, but they don't. You know, Flamingo, yeah, people show up at like six, they're out by two, but then the traffic is still reduced down to thirty-three percent, you know? So there's some huge challenges that we have here, and we have to get it addressed to them. Since we started Las Vegas Road Construction Watch, there's already, we're halfway where you guys are on your Facebook page right now, and people are mad. People are submitting photos. We can't even go through them fast enough right now, because we all have jobs and are crazy people. So we're trying to sort through all these photos and get them up there, we just can't. Like, people are really freaking out about the way that the road construction is like stopping our commute, and we want to, you know, try to help you guys get a handle on this and bring a voice to the people. The Seeing Orange Campaign's done that. The people are really super nice there, but the information getting to us, I think, needs to be a little bit more accessible online and searchable. I think transparency is a huge problem, like the county and the city have. Us getting information to figure out what you guys are doing and why you're doing it is nearly impossible at times. The public information officers and whatnot are nice, but we want to be able to access the information so that we can actually drill through it, because taking a second, a staff's opinion or a staff's information on some of the items are just, it's not enough data for us to crunch, I know.
And Barry, if you didn't, would you state your name for the record?
Barry Johnston, Las Vegas Road Construction Watch.
Thank you, and I think we're setting up a meeting with Commissioner Sisalak?
Yeah.
Please.
Mr. Chair, could I just make a comment on that one?
Councilwoman.
I agree with you that that should be looked into carefully. I get comments all the time, and three years ago, it's the same contractor or subcontractor that I'm getting complaints against now. For example, you're not supposed to start until seven, and why are you starting at six? And you're supposed to end at a certain time, why aren't you doing that over and over again? And it just seems that it's something that's ignored a lot by the people who should not ignoring it. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to...
And you can pull that mic up. You don't have, yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair, that I can address this board. My name is Alita Dupree, A-L-E-T-A-D-U-P-R-E-E. I live here in the city of Las Vegas, and I identify myself before you as a disabled military veteran, and today I would like to take my time to talk about the payment of fares. Normally, and by the way, I took the bus to come here today. I take the bus to come, go everywhere. So normally, I pay with my fifteen-day pass and my reduced fare ID card. However, I have to always go a place to purchase my fare media, or I have to have cash to board the vehicle if I don't have fare media. There is no way for a person, anybody, to be able to purchase fare media online or at a retail... There is a way to purchase fare media at a retail shop, however, sometimes they do not have paper media. So I present before you my two stored-value fare cards from Los Angeles and San Francisco, which allow me to load fare online, and I have accounts with both, and in San Francisco, it loads all my passes and fares automatically.
Excellent.
Some places, such as, I believe, Portland, Oregon, let you pay with your phone. I would really like that. Then I could put all my fares on my phone. I use this all the time. This phone is not a tool to impress people, but it helps me as a disabled person to live my life. And so for me, why should I have to go to a place to buy fare media when I can have it automatically loaded for me, only to find that there's no fare media when I get there? Also, when you board the bus with cards like this, you don't have to wait behind people who have to pay with cash. Several people can tap their card, and the driver will hear the beep. Now, what I'd really like, and we can show the world what we can do, I'd really like to be able to pay my bus fare with my watch.
Rock and roll.
So I think that's all I have to say today, and thank you again for your time and listening to me today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if we could, offer to get with Alita afterwards. I would like to share with you an update on our programs, but I also like to say, amen. I appreciate you highlighting what other transit agencies are doing as well, and we are, we are learning from them, and we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
So Alita, if you could wait just a few moments after the meeting, one of our staff is going to give you an update on some of the technology.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can. Mayor.
You know, I'd just love to hear a quick synopsis, because I know we're working on this, and I thought your points were great, and that therefore gets out to everybody that they know that we're already involved in it, in a brief response, rather than just for him alone.
Sure, we'll have Deputy General Manager MB Maynard address that.
Mayor Goodman, I'm glad you asked. We are very excited. We have been working with multiple vendors to propose a mobile ticket app solution. We just picked Masabi, and we'll be entering negotiations with them in the next couple of weeks. We're rolling out a pilot that will consist of about twelve months prior to going full system, but it's not only a mobile ticket app, it will be for all customers to plan their trip, find their bus. They can also submit comments about the service, so we are, we're very excited, all by the phone, and hopefully by a watch.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're on our way. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one, close this portion of public comment. This meeting is adjourned.